With glowing hearts we see thee rise, our true north, strong and free. Oh, Canada, God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, glorious and free. We stand on guard, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you very much for gracing us with your presence this evening. Thank you again. I'd like to ask Counselor Deodaddi to lead us in prayer, please.
In the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. People are often unreasonable, illogical, and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and frank, people may cheat you. Be honest and frank anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, they may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough. Give the world the best you've got anyway. In the final analysis, it's between you and God. It's not between you and them anyway. Amen.
Amen.
Father, Son?
Thank you. Thank you. Members of council, the first order of business is the adoption of the council minutes of June 9th. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions with respect to the minutes? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. At this time, we have a number of deputations. I'd like to call -- I'm sorry?
Disclosures.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry. Are there any disclosures by a beginning interest at this point? Counselor Wing?
Yes, there was an in-camera matter which affected a member of my family's employment.
Okay, so noted. Any others? Okay, thanks. We'll move on to deputations. This evening, we do have an acknowledgement from the -- for the Senior of the Year, and I'd like to invite, if I may, Hanya Goforth from the Coronation Centre to come along forward with Carol Gillespie, the recipient of the Senior of the Year Award. Congratulations.
Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, this is Carol Gillespie. Carol has been named Senior of the Year in Niagara Falls. In cooperation with the provincial government, we would like to honor her for her contributions to our community. Carol Gillespie joined the Coronation Centre in 2001. Throughout the course of time, she has served on many committees, including the Advisory Committee and the Programs and Services Committee. Carol is also a greeter who will take new potential members on a tour of the building, helpful phone calls, and they can always rely on her turning up for her shift, happy and wanting to lend a hand. Carol has worked in the Coronation Closet as a store assistant and also appeared in the Closet Fashion Shows. And she was quick to sign up and help us and help when the Centre had opened the Craft House Cafe last September, and has been a real asset to the cafe team. And she is well-liked by the volunteers of the cafe and the customers as well of the cafe. And we're truly grateful for her tremendous efforts and contributions to the Coronation Centre, and she is truly deserving of this award. And our congratulations go to Carol Gillespie for earning the Senior of the Year Award. I'd like to say congratulations.
And we should explain what coming over the closet means at the Coronation Centre. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, have your -- Mayor Selsey, council, and honored guests, thank you very much for this award and the honor that goes with it. I really appreciate it. I enjoy the work that I do at the Coronation Centre, and all our volunteers there are really proud of the Coronation Centre. My thanks goes to my family. They never know what I'm doing from one day to the next. I let them off. And thank you, Hanya, and the staff of the Coronation Centre for voting me Volunteer of the Year. You're very great to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Hanya. If you have to remember that, council, it's my pleasure to actually congratulate you as well. I wanted to say one thing, that the Coronation Centre is a very lively and active place, and Hanya, you do a great job with the seniors. They love you there. Please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. Thank you. The next order of business is the introduction of the provincial soccer champions. I'm very pleased that they're here to attend this evening. I'd like to ask them to stand. The St. Michael Catholic High School senior boys soccer team, would you please stand, please?
The St. Michael Catholic High School Boys' Soccer Team recently competed in the OFSA, the Ontario Federation of Soccer Athletics Association, and came away as the soccer champions. Their journey began early in the year when the team committed to a preseason training in February. They traveled to Bethany, West Virginia in April, and competed in the Can-Am Boys' Soccer Tournament. The team captured their first three games, giving them the chance to compete in the finals, only to fall short and place second in the overall tournament. This provided to be -- proved to be an excellent team-building experience. The team practiced four days a week preparing for the regular season. Finishing with a 6-1 record, the St. Mike's Mustangs captured the zone title, defending E.L. Crosley, and then traveled to the SASSA Regionals, Southern Ontario Secondary School Association, for the first time in four years. At SASSA, the team fought their way to capture the championship by defeating Hamilton Christian in penalty kicks. The St. Mike's team traveled to Sarnia for the OFSA tournament and captured the championship title for the first time ever. The St. Mike's Mustangs are rated number one in Ontario for double-A senior boys soccer. Congratulations to the coach and the team players.
If I could have you come forward, please, as your name is called. I'd like to call Sergio Carlos Martin. James Di Filippis. And Julian Tropea. Julian? We also have the head coach, Pat Ricky. Can we ask the coach to make some comments on behalf of the team?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Ted Selsey and the council for inviting us here this evening. It's very flattering. We're honored to be here. Again, another congratulations to this team. Great deal of effort, a lot of discipline, a great deal of commitment early on in February, and it really was a true Cinderella story with three penalty kick games and overtimes and red cards and you name it. So it was a battle. I'd love to do it again with a good number of them, and I wish them all the best luck in the future.
Congratulations, gentlemen. We're very proud. Thank you very much. Thanks. Yes, do you want to say anything? Go ahead.
Mario Cisarrelli, can you come up here?
Yes, Mario, would you like to come forward, please? Mario Cisarrelli is here, principal of St. Mike's. Mario found himself in an awkward spot this year, having moved from St. Paul, where he did an excellent job. Why don't you come forward, Mario?
Sure.
He's now a principal at St. Mike's, and we're very proud that they've won a championship. Do you want to say a few words?
Mr. Barucci said everything. Very glad to be at St. Mike's, and it's a nice way to start a new school, and these guys have been phenomenal, great ambassadors for our school. We certainly applaud them each other one.
Thank you, Mario. Thank you, Mr. Barucci. Thank you. Thank you, Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I guess, being a teacher at the school, I'd be remiss if I didn't say a few words. I think that this year has been very successful in terms of athletics at St. Michael. I just wanted to express how proud not only the staff is, but the entire student body of the boys and that they were able to win OFSA. I think that it goes without saying that a lot of hard work and dedication, as Mr. Barucci stated, is needed to win a championship, and I know that the boys worked hard, and I know that the coaches worked hard as well, Your Worship. All of the coaches are dedicated to not only excellence in the classroom, but also they're also dedicated to furthering and developing the children through co-curricular activities. So once again, I just want to say thank you very much, and congratulations to the boys and your coaches.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We're very proud. And, coaches, thank you for your commitment, and Mario, thank you again. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaws to permit the conversion and expansion of an existing dwelling into a commercial use located at 6586 Thorl Stone Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 23rd, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan and/or zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, Your Worship. This application involves a property on Thorl Stone Road, the amendment to the official plan and zoning bylaw to allow for the conversion of an existing dwelling into commercial use. Oops, wrong button. Can you help me out already? The property is located on the south side of Thorl Stone Road between St. James on the east and Confederation on the west. It's opposite Our Lady Schacler Church, immediately adjacent to the Far East Restaurant on the east. There are a number of residential properties extending to the west as well as to the south of the subject lands. The plan ahead of you shows the site plan layout for this particular property. The -- it's quite a large residential property. There's a house at the front of the site, and the proponents propose to add a major addition onto the back of the building, which would total 8,000 square feet, which would be used for office purposes and various commercial uses. It's about a quarter of an acre in size. The property as well shows substantial parking area as well as significant landscape area on the particular site. The background behind this application is that the applicant is seeking an official plan amendment. He would leave it residential, but he would allow a -- request a special provision to allow the commercial use. They requested a site-specific neighborhood commercial zone to allow the commercial uses, and they wish to expand the building, as I've mentioned, to about 8,000 square feet. The official plan in this area designates all of the lands as residential, which provides for a variety of dwelling types. The lands front on Thorl Stone Road, as I mentioned, it's between Drummond and Dorchester Road, and the whole area is actually identified for multiple-family development. It's either zoned R5A, one of our higher-density uses, or TRM, which is a transitional residential multiple zone with the ultimate intention that this area would develop for multiple-family units. The city has policies that are required to meet the provincial targets for providing multiple-family housing. This site, if it was to develop, it would accommodate 12 apartment units. The official plan would actually provide for more units to be considered by council through a rezoning. The removal of these lands would actually represent a loss from our inventory of multiple-family sites that are currently zoned. The commercial development in this area is actually directed by our official plan to the major commercial area at Thorl Stone Road and Dorchester, the five corners area of the city, or to the minor commercial district, which is at Dorchester Road and Thorl Stone Road. The idea behind the planning program is actually to prevent further strip commercial development from occurring and provide for intensified forms of residential development that can support the commercial development. There's also opportunities within the designated commercial nodes to accommodate the commercial development proposed, and we do note that there are two restaurants. I mentioned the Far East Restaurant. Crossing the Far East Restaurant is John's Restaurant, which both of those have recognition due to their long-term historic presence. John's is a zone neighborhood commercial. The Far East is actually a residential zone. The zoning on the property now is an R5A zone, a residential apartment 5A, which would provide for apartment development. As I mentioned, it would kind of -- could accommodate 12 units. The request is for a neighborhood commercial zone, as well, they're looking for a number of site-specific provisions. Under neighborhood commercial, there's a floor area limit, which would normally limit any size of a store or commercial use to 2,475 square feet. They're also looking for a height increase from the standard 26 feet in height to a 32-foot height. They're also seeking to reduce the rear yard setback from 49 feet down to 16 feet. They want to also establish site-specific provisions, which would recognize the lot coverage and the significant landscape area that's actually on the -- shown on the site. You saw it a moment ago in green. They're also seeking a number of -- their application was seeking a number of commercial uses in addition to offices. Those are on the screen in front of you, but I'll skip ahead to say that there is a letter from the solicitor for the applicant stating that they would wish to revise that to be for offices and/or a clinic use only, so they would not be seeking any of the retail stores or other uses, certainly not the restaurant and adult stores that would typically be permitted under a neighborhood commercial use. The commercial use in this area, we believe, is actually intrusion of uses where none are contemplated. As I mentioned, they are directed by the official plan to the designated commercial areas. The conclusion, then, is that this application should not be permitted, as it does not comply with the official plan. There are sufficient opportunities for commercial development to occur in the designated areas. The zoning would remove lands from the multi-family area, and there is a need to retain the subject lands for future intensification. We are recommending that council not support this application, but if council does choose to approve it, that they limit it to the nature of the application that's shown on Schedule II in the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 17, subsection 24 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? The third time, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, now council will hear from the applicant or his representative.
Thank you, Your Worship. Nice to be here, your counsel. The one thing I think the thing to look at in this situation is the location of this property. And it's located, of course, you've got the Chinese restaurant to the east of this property, which has got a very large parking lot. You've got John's across the way, you've got the church across the street. So you're reading -- this little node here really is sort of commercial. Although they're legally nonconforming, it's there. So the question is, does it fit in? I would say that if we were bringing an application to the west of this, okay, because really you've got a lot of land, a lot of houses to the west up to Dorchester that are zoned R5A or TRM. And if we were bringing an application in the middle of that, I'd say turn it down because it wouldn't fit in. But I say this is beside these restaurants, right in the contiguous area, and therefore it's sort of logical. If you -- we had a meeting with the neighbors on Thursday night, and it was quite successful. We had a lot of people there, a lot of people on Thorl Stone Road, and a lot of people on Crawford Street. In particular, Gerald Campagada, who'd like to have a -- to be notified of the site plan that this is approved. He's at 6601 Crawford Street, right across the street. Mainly, he was concerned about fencing. We've satisfied him on that. He's concerned about our uses of the property, like he wouldn't want a restaurant, for example. People -- I think all of the people in Crawford Street should be in the -- involved in the site plan process that this is approved, because it's a matter of -- and I know that I know that Amadeo Candada will do an excellent job on the building. It looks really nice. The -- if you look at -- I went down the street and make a look at a very nice building down the street, which is apartment, Cherrywood Gardens. I don't know if you know about it. It's very, very nice, but I went around the back of it, and the back of it is 20 feet from the lot line, and the balconies, the people on the balconies can look down at the chap's pool, right there. This building -- and that's only 20 feet, but this building is 65 feet from the backyard. So I think, really, as opposed to an apartment, and of course, it's zoned for 20 units or 12 units, and probably would be a lot more than the official plan, I think this would be a lot better used for the neighbors of Crawford Street as opposed to an apartment, which would be 20 feet away from their lot lines. So I think that's a major factor. I think it fits right in here. I would also say that when I -- originally, when Amadeo Candada was buying this building, we knew that the city, you know, generally would probably not be supportive of it, but he had looked diligently where he is now on Thorl Stone Road and other locations, and couldn't find anything suitable. So he really did look, and I believe him on that. I think it fits in the area. I think it's a good use. It's a nine-to-five operation. Apartment building is not nine-to-five. It's been one for a long time. It's an insurance agency. Mainly, about 6,000 square feet will be used for the insurance agency. The insurance agency, many people don't go. I haven't been to my -- my insurance man, I haven't seen him in 10 years. I haven't been to his location. People don't drive to them. So it's got 45 parking spaces, more than enough, and I think it'll be a use that's not intrusive on the neighbors. So I'd ask you to support it. I think it makes some sense.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Mr. Sinclair, by members of council? Any questions? Yes. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Perhaps not of Mr. Sinclair, but perhaps of staff, Your Worship. And I understand that there is 65 feet in between the building and the lot line, and if this property were to have a commercial designation with it, would there be any restriction, I guess, that would maintain that 65-foot, I guess, buffer between the residents at Crawford and the actual building? Or because you have a commercial designation, would you now be able to build or add onto the building?
Okay. A question to planning, possibly, or?
Your Worship, I think that was the point I was trying to make at the end of my presentation, and that is, if council chooses to approve this site plan, then I think they should put in the conditions or the setbacks that are shown on the schedule that's in front of you, which is Schedule II, which would secure that for the residents in the future.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. This is just a statement, and it says here from the region. The subject property is within the urban area boundaries of the city of Niagara Falls according to the regional policy plan. The urban area policy provides for a range of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. And in conclusion, the region has no objection to this. So I'm going to support the application in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes. First of all, I want to compliment the applicant on being involved with the neighborhood. I had a couple of calls initially of people who had some concerns, in fact, Mr. Campagada. And I know you've had public meetings, and you have reacted to their concerns. Actually, Mr. Amadeo Candada is on Thorl Stone Street at a different location, and this actually is a larger piece of property, and in my opinion, it fits very well rather than a 12-unit apartment building. I think there's lots of green space, a lot of setback, and the major portion will be insurance, and I see that this is an ideal use for that particular property. I hope that all of the concerns are going to be included, and I would, at the appropriate time, make a motion that the residents be invited to participate in the site plan so that everybody has, not just Crawford Street, but anyone has an opportunity to sit in to make sure the fencing is up. I think that's extremely appropriate, and has been mentioned in the reports. And I think that the use be limited, if it's going to be a clinic, that it be limited to a clinic. And -- limited to a clinic, and that's, that should be included in the motion also, to make sure that this doesn't become a general commercial use, which could be something that is going to bother the neighbors. This is a nine-to-five operation, I like that, and I think you have to be complimented on the work you've done with the neighbors, because they apparently have been satisfied with your reaction to, their reaction to some of the concerns that they had.
Actually, Chris Christelli did most of the work at the meeting. Amazing it got through then.
Are there any further questions from council or persons present with respect to the clarification of the proposed application? Okay, having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. The pleasure of council. Counsel Thompson.
Second.
Do you want to make the motion, counsel, with those, with those inclusions?
Yes.
Okay. Second by Counsel Maves. Any further comment? Yes, Counsel Wing.
I'm not going to support the motion. Interestingly, the one thing we didn't hear from the Crawford Street neighbors was that they would prefer this to an apartment building. You know, if I'd heard that, I might think differently, might, have other concerns. I don't think this is good planning. I can probably not say it better than the planners, so I'll just read a few excerpts from the report. "These lands are intended to assist the city in meeting housing targets required under provincial policies. Removal of these lands from the inventory of properties for residential redevelopment will reduce the opportunity for the city to meet residential intensification targets in the future. The city's planning program is designed to prevent further strip commercial development from occurring between nodes, and to protect the residential area between the nodes for intensified forms of residential development. The commercial uses represent an intrusion into an area where commercial uses are not contemplated, and the staff, in order to assist the applicant, has suggested that the proposed office could be located downtown. And to me, that makes a heck of a lot of sense, because financial and professional offices are one area that Queen Street is successful with. That is, that is its strong point. This would be a natural fit, and would help to revitalize the downtown, which apparently we're interested in doing here, but no, instead we're going to improve this going on Thorold Stone Road. I think this is a real missed opportunity, and it flies in the face of good planning."
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Carrio.
Thank you, Worship. I'm going to support the motion as it stands. Just due to the fact that none of the neighbors are here to object, I'm assuming that the applicant has satisfied all the needs of the neighbors. I don't think it's that bad, Your Worship. I think if I was a neighbor, I'd prefer to have this especially, now that they've gone specific to an office use and a clinic use. If it was me, I'd prefer to be, you know, that, than somewhere down the road not know what could be on the property, so I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Having seen none, we have a motion on the floor, members of council. All those in favor? Opposed? One, the motion's carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk? Come on, let's get this here. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a gasoline bar and retail store at 5204 Stanley Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 23, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovich.
Thank you, Worship. This application is for a property at the northeast corner of Stanley Avenue and McCray. It's, to the north is actually a vacant lot. Further beyond that are single detached dwellings. Property immediately to the east is a house that's zoned for commercial purposes beyond which are residential uses. To the west is a commercial plaza, which includes a gas bar, a drive-through donut shop, and a number of other commercial uses. The site plan for this property shows the existing site. It was previously a gas station or service center. It's currently zoned, automobile service station, gasoline bar. There is an existing building on the site. The applicant wishes to recognize that existing building and its current location, which is quite close to the east lot line, and to allow for a, in addition to that building, you can see three areas for gas pump islands in the middle of the site, and over top of that, the gas pump island would be a canopy to protect drivers as they pump their fuel. The canopy is closer to the north lot line, or the green strip, than the bylaw would normally permit. The background behind this is that the site is, is 1,300 square feet, or square meters, rather, in, in size. They want to add a convenience store as a use in addition to the already permitted automobile service station, gasoline bar. They're requesting special provisions, as I've just outlined, for the east and north lot lines. They wish to reestablish the gas use that was already there. The site is zoned or designated residential in the official plan, which allows some neighborhood commercial uses, but would not typically allow for new gasoline bars. However, the official plan does identify areas where gasoline bars would be located. Those are commercially designated areas along arterial roads. This site, though, is already zoned for an automobile service station. Stanley Avenue is a gasoline bar, or Stanley Avenue, sorry, is already an arterial road, so it does meet certain of those requirements, but would have to be considered under the non-complying policies. The requested zoning for a convenience store is typical of the type of use that you would expect to find under neighborhood commercial, so adding that to the convenience, or to the gas bar is an extension of the use that's already there. As I mentioned, the site is zoned automobile service station. They're seeking to add a retail use as a, as a use on the property. They're going to limit the size of the store to 1,200 square feet. They're seeking the side yard setback to that of the established building. They're seeking lock coverage from 5% to 22%. While that seems like a significant jump, it is for the canopy. The canopy is an open structure, and we believe therefore provides sufficient space beneath that to, to allow, not block visibility. And the previous standard actually represents the size of a canopy when self-service gas stations were not the norm, but full-service stations, when someone would come up to pump the gas, and therefore the canopy was only the size of covering the gas pumps. The reduction in the gas in the canopy from the north lot line is relatively small, it's a reduction from 19 feet to 13.8 feet. So there, and the gas pumps will remain the required distance away from the property line on the north, six meters or 19.7 feet. There will be a fence around the property, which is required under the zoning bylaw, and so that will as well form a screen between it and the adjacent properties to further mitigate the, the development of this site as well. We're recommending that we secure the three-meter, 10-foot-wide landscape strip that's shown along McCray Street, and the 2.4-meter, 8-foot-wide landscape strip along Stanley Avenue, save it's up to the driveways. So the, the planning department is supporting this application. We believe it does comply with the official plan. The site-specific provisions for the store, the size, the lock coverage, will secure the development opportunities on this, and ensure that the impact on surrounding properties is minimalized, and that the subject site will be subject to a site plan agreement. Therefore, we are recommending that the council support the application to add a retail store to the current automobile service station zone as appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Are you opposing the bylaw amendment, sir?
I just got some concerns.
Okay, please come forward. Be kind enough to state your name and address.
My name's Ron LaFave. I've got two properties adjacent to the, on the north side, and I've got six properties in behind the, on the, on the east side. Concerns are the fact that they're using the existing building, and that there's only, like, two and a half feet between the buildings right now. And another concern is that they're only using the three lots, they have an empty lot. Why would not, why would they not use the fourth lot for that extra space? My concerns are for the convenience store, for the hours of operations, like it's a residential area, they're going to be open until midnight, 2 o'clock. Another concern is that, right now, as an empty lot, it's not being taken care of. Concern is, somebody moving in, if they can't take care of an empty lot, will they be able to take care of the lot that's going to be coming out? Other than that, that's about my own concerns.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if we get your questions answered.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to come forward to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Anyone else who wishes to come forward speaking in opposition to the proposed amendment?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. At this time then, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant, or from the applicant, I should say, or his representative. Mr. Christelli, are you representing the applicant?
Thank you, Your Worship, Chris Christelli. I'm acting as agent for the applicant. And council members and staff members, thank you very much for this opportunity to answer questions that Ron LaFave has. There is, there is a lot to the north of this particular lot that we're requesting the, that the gas bar be put on. And the reason that we didn't include that lot was because we felt that the, the gas station would fit on this particular lot. And the, I believe that that lot is, that lot is zoned residential, so we have to have that amended as well. So it was decided, that the applicant decided that the lot that we're dealing with is, is enough to provide the service that, that he wants. And if I can go on?
Sure.
Okay. The hours of operations, it, as a normal gas bar would be, I didn't really get any in-depth detail on that. I would, I don't know if it's a 24-hour operation, but I think most gas bars are. It may close at 11 o'clock in the evening, and if that's the case, then everything would shut down on the site, and it wouldn't be a 24-hour operation. The care of the lot, I'm not directly involved with that, but I'm sure that once, if this is approved, that the lot would be developed, and most of the weeds or whatever would be certainly cleared away, and we, we have to go through a site plan agreement process whereby fencing and landscaping would be designed by a landscape architect, so there is a substantial amount of work to be done on the site to enhance it, as it were. The existing building is in place now. It, we're not asking, all's we're going to do is extend, add in addition to the south end of the building, which would increase the floor area. And it's a, it's a minor addition. The idea would be to, it works well with the traffic flow within the lot, the vehicles getting in and out. We toyed with the idea of putting the, the building on the north side of the lot, taking this one down, and building on the north side of the lot, but it sort of cramped the traffic flow for the ease of getting in and out of the pumps and providing the proper amount of parking that would be required. So there were a number of scenarios that we entertained, and this one would seem to be the most efficient. And it's going to be, the building will be, the facade of the building will be changed, and decorated to a point where it's, it's going to be a nice, clean, sharp-looking building. It'll look like a brand-new facade. So I, I'm not sure whether this satisfies any answers that, to the questions that have been made by Mr. LaFave, but.
We'll find that out.
It'd be helpful. There's some other items that I wish to discuss.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. There was a, the report to council indicates that the, they requested or require, staff indicated to council that they require a daylight triangle. The actual report came from the Niagara region, and was signatured by Sue Maybe. Yep, she's a planner with them. And the, the comment in there was that the, the daylight triangle is requested, not required. However, the report to council, it indicates on page two that the property, that it would be required to provide the daylight triangle. There was, we have an official Ontario Land Surveyor survey done on the property, and that was done in the new year, last year. So it's quite recent. And at that particular corner, which would be the southwest corner, there is a three-meter by three-meter easement going through there for the Bell Telephone. And I have, I have a copy of the survey here, if anybody, I could circulate this so that you could see what I was talking about. But I, I'm not sure whether this complicates the, the application in that they're requesting a five-by-five-meter daylight triangle. There's already, as I say, a three-by-three-meter Bell Telephone easement at that particular So I, I guess what I'm asking is that, some clarification on that, as to whether this should be a requirement or a request, or can we just accept the fact that the Bell Telephone already has one there?
Let's see if we get that question answered. Mr. Hurlovich, are you in position to answer that?
The, the site plan process is the appropriate time at which we would take the widening, actually, because, the reason that the region has worded it that way, the region doesn't enter into site plan agreements, the municipality enters into site plan agreements. The region has policies that would require us to, or would require the applicant to dedicate widenings and, and daylighting triangles, and because it's the city that enters into the site plan agreement, they're making the request to us, but it is our obligation to secure it during the site plan process. We would work with the, the applicant to ensure that it wouldn't impede his movements through the site, and see the corner of the site. I think, you know, the way in which traffic will flow across this site and to the gas pumps, I think we should be able to accommodate that.
Mr. Christelli, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I, I was curious, I, I think the only comment that I had was that if there's, exists, if there's an existing three-meter by three-meter allowance in there, do we really need a five-by-five daylight triangle? I guess, as, as a requirement, especially when the region requested it, so.
Okay.
I guess what I'm asking is, can we waive that?
Okay. Well, I asked Mr. Hurlovich or Mr. Dren, one of the two, could you answer that question, please? Mr. Dren?
Through the mayor, basically daylighting triangle, especially at the intersection of Stanley Avenue, you want, you don't want to impede the visibility, and that's why the region has that set standard for a regional road of five-by-five for the intersection of a arterial and a local road, that's the minimum. And it's really just because of the visibility issues associated with Stanley Avenue. Um, and it's really just because of the visibility issues associated, uh, with Stanley Avenue.
Okay. Is there anything further, Mr. Cruselli? Are there any further questions by members of council or persons present with respect to the clarification of the proposed application? Okay, having seen none, quite no questions then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. The pleasure of council.
Move the recommendation.
Counsel Fisher moves the recommendation. There's a second to the motion. Counsel Carrio, any further discussion or comment? Counsel Wing?
I just ask that Mr. LaFave be included in the site planning process.
Uh, you want to add that as a friend of the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, is that okay with the mover and secondor?
Assuming he be allowed.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? Call the vote, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cruselli.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw, um, to deal with, uh, general commercial zoning at forty-three fifty-four Drummond Road and Portage Road West Side. Notice was given in accordance with the, notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May twenty-third, two thousand and eight, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, this property involves a parcel of land that runs, uh, through from Drummond Road through to Portage Road, south of, uh, Gallenger Road. The, um, subject site is, uh, largely surrounded by, uh, commercial uses, um, and, uh, a church used to the west. The, uh, area is currently zoned general commercial. The applicant, uh, had obtained a few years ago a, uh, special, uh, general commercial zone that would allow, uh, a mixed-use, commercial, residential use of the whole of the property. The applicant now wishes to, uh, divide the property into two parts, one parcel running onto part one, onto Drummond Road, and part two onto Portage Road. Therefore, the zoning that applies to the whole of the land, uh, would no longer serve its purposes. Uh, the Committee of Adjustment granted him his severance, subject to obtaining a, uh, a zoning amendment. The official plan for the area is major commercial, uh, forms a part of the Stamford Retail District. The, uh, zoning is a, uh, site-specific general commercial zoning. They want to go back to the, uh, standard general commercial zoning, which is in the, uh, in the bylaw, and that would be the same as the majority lands in the area. It would satisfy a condition of the Committee of Adjustment and, uh, would create two lots as an alternative to the current development approval. Therefore, planning department is recommending, uh, support of the zoning application to the standard general commercial zone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in the staff rejecting an appeal as per section thirty-four subsection nineteen of the Planning Act. The agent for the applicant, Mr. Bill Amadio, could not be in attendance, but, uh, there's no one else present here that I believe has any interest in this matter with respect to the application. Um, I'll ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen, yes, having seen none unless there's somebody in the corner, so, so at this point, members of council, any questions? Counsel Maves?
I just want to move the recommendation.
Well, we just will close the meeting in a second. Just any, any comments from staff? Nothing? Okay. At this point then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Counsel Maves, moved by Counsel Maves, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any further discussion to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Yes. Counsel Thompson?
Yes, uh, the next two, uh, items, uh, are of interest to, uh, Counsel Iannoni, who is not able to be here tonight, she's not well, and, uh, wanted to know if those two, um, zero-six and fifteen could be deferred for the next meeting, and, uh, I would so move that the Iannoni papers be moved to the next meeting.
We have a motion to move the next two items, uh, to the next meeting. Is that your recommendation? Is there a secondor?
Yeah.
Counsel Wing, any discussion to this?
It's different.
Yes, obviously. Okay, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the motion is answered. Thank you very much. Members of council would like to begin this evening by offering condolences to Mr. Greg Gardner of the Fire Services Department, whose father Graham Gardner recently passed away. Also to Lorraine Racine, uh, from our Parking and Traffic Division, and Ralph Racine at the Fairview Cemetery, who recently lost their father, Mr. Florent Racine. And to the family of Mr. Len Burke, who was formerly an employee of our Municipal Service Centre. We offer our most sincere sympathy and our thoughts are with the families during this very difficult time. I'd like to continue by acknowledging some of recent notable events in our city. Members of the International Joint Commission gathered recently at the Oaks Hotel on June tenth at a meeting of the Rotary Club to announce the kickoff of events planned to commemorate the centennial of the signing of the International Boundary Waters Treaty. This is a significant historic treaty that binds both Canada and U.S. to maintaining the integrity of the Great Lakes and our shared waters. Large-scale celebrations are planned in Niagara Falls in two thousand and nine. On Wednesday, June eighteenth, I was pleased to be at the Battleground Hotel for the kickoff of Celebration Two Thousand and Twelve, which will commemorate the bicentennial of the War of Eighteen Twelve. The first major event is set to be held this November, and for more information, residents are invited to call or visit the Lundys Lane Historical Museum. Many in our community gathered together today to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the OPP detachment here in Niagara Falls. It was a wonderful occasion to acknowledge the good work that the Ontario Provincial Police do in our city and around the province, as well as to recognize this milestone anniversary. Congratulations to the OPP in Niagara Falls on fifty years of law enforcement here in our city. I'd like to mention some events as well that are coming up in our community that will be of interest to members of council and residents. This week marks the graduation of all five area high schools and a number of elementary school graduations as well. I would like to take a moment to wish all Niagara Falls students a safe and exciting summer and to congratulate them on a job well done this year. The efforts of the students, teachers, and administrators at our schools in Niagara Falls should certainly be acknowledged. I'm also pleased to welcome hundreds of international golfers to our city this week for the prestigious Rotary International Golf Tournament. This event brings golfers and Rotarians to our community from more than thirty-two countries across the globe. And I, again, I welcome our visitors and I wish them much success and enjoyment at this year's tournament. I'd also like to invite everyone to attend the Canada Day celebrations in Niagara Falls on Tuesday, July first. This year, the city's parade will begin at ten a.m. at the corner of Portage and Morrison, and following will be an all-day event at the Optimus Park with the, with entertainment, exhibits, vendors, and a car show. It'll be fun for the whole family. I look forward to seeing many of you there at this year's Canada Day celebration next Tuesday. I also like to remind members of council that you're accordingly invited to attend a memorial bench unveiling, a tribute to Mr. Sam Irfida, to be held on Saturday, June twenty-eighth at ten a.m. at Mitchellson Park, located at thirty-seven fifty Springdale Avenue. And finally, I'd like to ask council to pass a motion of support to arrange meetings with the following provincial ministers to endeavor to gain support for our eighteen-twelve legacy project at the upcoming AMO conference in August. We'd like to meet with Energy and Infrastructure Minister George Smitherman, Mr. Peter Fonseca, Minister of Tourism, and Eileen Carroll, Minister of Culture. If I could ask for a motion, please? By Counsel Diadati, seconded by Counsel Carrio. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. And of course, this project is very important to the importance of our community and the, and will serve to pay tribute to our heritage in Niagara for many years to come. And with council support, again, we're going to ask, uh, for an investment from our provincial government to make this project a reality. Those are my remarks for this evening. And we'll move on to the next matter of business. Under Communications, Falls BIA requests approval for their two thousand and eight budget. Moved by Counsel, sorry, you want, you want to speak, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, uh, I would move the Falls BIA budget, the Victoria Centre BIA budget, the Regional Municipality request for the AMP stores and Home Depot for, uh, considered as tourism exemptions, and, uh, the request from Martin Shepherd Fraser, uh, to, uh, appear at council on July the seventh.
I'll second that.
They'll be requesting, uh, to appear at Community Services Committee July seventh to speak to the, or to rescind the motion from two thousand to return to, uh, to return six-three-three-five Crawford Street to green space. So we have a motion to move all those, uh, seconded by Counsel Fisher, Counsel Wing.
I'm opposed to the third one, the reconsideration. Um, the reason they provided is they require the space for the dumping of snow. And I'm sorry, but if you want a space for snow storage, it's a lot better as a green space because then when the snow melts, it gets absorbed instead of running off into the street.
Let's, let's lift that one, counselor.
Okay, we can lift that.
So we have a motion then for, for the first, uh, actually, A, one A, one B, and two. Let's deal with those first. I'll call, vote all those in favor. Okay, the motion's passed. Thank you. Now, item number three, wish to speak to it?
Okay, for snow storage, you're better off having it as a green space.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And, uh, in the summertime, if you have a paved area, we all know what the parking lot feels like in the summertime. You can't wait to get to the nearest green space. Um, it's a lot better that way. I don't want to go through all this dragging the residents out here again. We've been down this road. The residents were really upset when it was, for, when the house was torn down and was turned into a parking lot illegally. The direction, after some heated debate, was to return it to green space, and to me, that makes sense. I don't understand why, you know, eight years later, this still hasn't been done, but I am not prepared to revisit this.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, well, the request is can they appear at council on July the seventh? I've never seen anybody turn down for a request. Uh, well, they will make their case and there's an opportunity to have a discussion and see if there's, uh, any new information. Uh, it was in the year two thousand, eight years have gone by. I'm sure there's been a tremendous change there, and, uh, I'm not in favor of suggesting to anybody they can't come and make a submission to this council.
Okay. Counsel Wing?
Nobody is suggesting that somebody shouldn't come and make a presentation to council. What we have here is a statement from staff that they feel that procedurally council has to determine whether they even want to entertain a reconsideration motion. So basically, what we have before us is a motion for reconsideration. I am not prepared to support a motion for reconsideration on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Thompson?
And that's fine. Uh, she can vote against the motion, but, uh, I am in favor of seeing if there's any new information, and the motion has been made. Let's vote on it.
Okay, any other comments? We do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, opposed? We have one. Thank you. All righty, we'll move on to reports. Are there any additional items for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk?
No, your worship.
Okay. We do have a report, uh, under item number one, uh, CD two zero-zero-eight dash oh-nine, The Prey Nightclub at fifty-eight ninety Main Street. Moved by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Fisher. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Under Resolutions, again, with those approved, ratification of Community Services Committee actions. The Chair has temporarily stepped out of the room.
May I read it?
Mr. Clerk?
Uh, the following, uh, items were recommended earlier this evening. Number one, uh, the minutes of the June ninth, uh, two thousand and eight meeting be approved. That the presentation on behalf of Warren Dak Investments Limited regarding the Warren Woods Master Plan be referred to staff. With regard to, uh, report MW two thousand and eight dash thirty-eight, the council authorized staff to hire a new position of Drinking Water Quality Management System Coordinator. With regard to report BBS two thousand and eight dash oh-one, the council received for information the update on the status of sixty-six oh-one Stamford Green Drive. The council directs staff to proceed with amendments to the zoning bylaw placing controls on site and rear lots. That staff prepare a report responding to Mr. Vaca's letter. That staff review the need for additional enforcement staff. C, uh, related to our two thousand and eight dash twenty-four, the recreation building, that the former Parks and Rec and Culture Building located at seventy-five sixty-five Lundys Lane not be demolished at this time. The council seek an offer from Mr. Felix Pingyu to refurbish the former building at no cost to the city. That Mr. Pingyu provide a detailed building end-use plan with specific space utilization within six months. That an update report be brought back to council for approval once the end-use plan is submitted. With regard to Charlotte Street parking review, that the permit parking control be installed on both sides of Charlotte Street, and under new business, that staff prepare a report on the sale of the Wall Street laneway.
Okay. The mover, please? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadati. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Ratification in camera?
Couple of items from in camera, um, similarly related, uh, based on the arbitrator's decision, committee recommends the passing of the bylaw and council agenda related to the two thousand and six to two thousand and eight collective agreement with the Niagara Falls Professional Firefighters Association. And in light of, uh, union ratification earlier this evening, committee recommends council approve the collective agreement for two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten with the Canadian Union of Public Employees, AKA QP, and that the, uh, wage increases apply to, uh, non-union staff.
Okay. Have a mover and secondor for that? Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Members of council, are there any items you wish to have lifted?
Move the consent agenda.
Moved by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws for council's consideration this evening?
Uh, there's just one minor, uh, bylaw amendment, and that's to the one related to appointments. One of the, uh, persons, uh, has decided to decline the appointment, so her name's been removed from the bylaw.
Thank you. I have a motion to introduce the bylaws. Bylaws to be given a first reading. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadati. Council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions?
Sit your hand down.
Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Bylaws two thousand and eight dash one oh-two to two thousand and eight dash one oh-six be read a first time?
I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and a third reading. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor?
Bylaws two thousand and eight dash one oh-two to two thousand and eight dash one oh-six, read a second and a third time and passed.
Thank you. Is there any new business this evening? Counsel Wing?
Just wondering when we're gonna get the report from staff on the, uh, littering by corporations in the city. Uh, recently, I know at least in my section of the city, presumably others, expired issues of, I think it was called the Smart Shopper, were throwing on our properties. Um, we had, uh, subsequent to that, we had an email from somebody, yet another person, someone I've never heard of before complaining about, uh, newspapers being tossed on his land and, uh, you know, it, it's a littering problem. That's what it is, and when are we gonna get the report and get this dealt with?
Mr. Hurlovich, could you address that at all?
I can.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Um, Mr. Beaman and I were discussing it today. Uh, it could be coming back as early as the next meeting.
Okay, any other new business? Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, just a minor item. I see the region has a, uh, a public service, uh, meeting, open houses with respect to, uh, recycling and, uh, garbage collection. Uh, have we formulated a council, uh, stance on that?
Yes, yes, we have. We have Counsel Peter Angelo, uh, just with respect to the bylaw with concern the, uh, waste removal. You did have some concern with regard to pickups and council has voiced its opinion saying they're opposed to the, uh, two-week cycle. And, uh, the report will come back and I encourage anybody who wishes to attend a